Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. This is the continuation of the 2018 budget meetings for the town council. And we have called this meeting tonight to look at Board of Ed CIP projects. And so that's what we're going to do first, is look at the CIP projects. And so do the -- I think we're looking at page 256. Is the first -- let's see, hold on. I'm sorry, page 257. Would anybody like to bring up -- Bonnie?
I'd like to make the motion to reconsider the CIP project on the water service needs.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to bring up a reconsideration of the CIP for water, water service needs. Any discussion on this? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. Bonnie?
I'd like to move a number.
Okay.
Zero.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for zero. Is there any discussion on this? So I'd just like to say, we're looking at the CIP projects for the education, one by one, and I believe that our -- at least my intent would be that we took some CIP projects from the town, and we put them on a list of if we got additional money from what we thought we were going to get cut, we would put those projects back into play. And for me, I would like to put some of these projects back on a list. And I think, you know, the lead content in the water at some of these schools should be put back on the list. So I'm willing to support the zero as long as it's on the list, should we get additional money. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of zero, please raise your hand. Opposed, abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. Next one is asbestos removal, and that was $185,000, and that passed eight to zero. Greg?
I'd like to put a motion on table to reconsider asbestos removal.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Greg and a second by Bonnie to reconsider. Any discussion on this? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. And anybody like to -- Diane?
I'd like to move a new number.
Okay.
Zero.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for zero. So any discussion on this? I think one of the things that we found when we were talking about this was we had cut it from 370 to 185. It was felt that the asbestos removal might be able to be done for the 370 from the year before and the 185 from this year. So we're going to zero out the 185, and I think that when -- I have a question for Mark. We were talked about the 370 that's still there from last year, and whether we are not -- if there's an ability to move that. And then when they're ready to do the asbestos removal, to let us know.
Well, I would ask that you maybe want to ask Sam as to what the status of that project is. It's my understanding it hasn't started yet, but I don't know that for sure. And if the thought -- if it hasn't started yet, or if it hasn't already been started last summer, let's say, what's the desire, to try to do the project all in one year when the rest of the money is available, or still do it in two different phases? If the answer is to all those is, you know, we haven't done the project, and yes, we'd like to do it all at once, I think there is the ability to kind of take back those dollars with the understanding that when the board is ready to move ahead with the project, the funding would be restored, in the entire amount of what's needed.
Okay. Sam?
Yeah, we haven't started the project yet.
And do you have a timetable of when you were looking to start it?
Well, we'd prefer to do the entire high school at the same time, rather than in two different summers and disrupting the school for -- there are a lot of activities during the summer at the high school, so we'd prefer to do it in one year.
And there is matching funds from the state, correct?
Yeah, it's about 50 percent. It's a little more than 50 percent, but it's in that range.
And is there a date that we have to do it by to get those funds, or do they run out at some point?
Presently, those funds are still available, but of course, we don't know what the state's going to do in the future.
Okay. All right, so.
Maybe just clarifications. Sam, were you looking to do this project this summer, or was it going to be the summer of '19?
It would have been next summer.
This coming summer, coming up, or the following?
No, the following summer.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, so the 370, we wouldn't have to do anything, we can just?
Yeah, I think we would probably would need to know from the council if it's your desire to cancel that project, so that if it is, we can then close out the project and put those funds back in the capital reserve account, so that when we figure the new number as a result of these changes, those dollars are in the fund balance.
So they would get credited, so to speak, to future projects.
Correct.
Okay. Dean?
Yeah, even if you don't do the project, you're still obligated to go and replace the non-friable -- the tiles with the non-friable asbestos in them, or the adhesive, or wherever, as they become damaged, correct?
That's correct.
Right, and at that point, as you spend that time and that money, you don't actually get the 54 percent, or whatever the percentage is, reimbursement from the state, it just goes into your general building maintenance costs.
If there's all the projects, that may be true.
Okay. That's my concern, that if we forego this, the work still has to be done, it's still going to be paid for, and we won't get any reimbursement from the state.
Mark?
I think the key, and I'm sorry, Sam, I'm looking at you like this, I think the key is if the desire is to do the project in summer of 2018, that there's no need to be tying that money up now, but there is -- in order for Sam to plan for that project, he needs to know prior to summer 2018 that the dollars are going to be there, maybe even out of the budget cycle for next year. Not that the dollars literally have to be there, but that the council, and then the RTM, understand that the dollars need to be there so that the project can happen in the summer. The problem with our schedule of the budget and doing projects in the schools sometimes is this work can only happen in the summer, and there's only so many asbestos contractors out there. And if Sam isn't in a position to get a contract out, or bid out, in the spring, or maybe late winter, with the absolute firm commitment that dollars are going to be there, he won't find any contractors possibly to do any of the work. So it sounds like you could pull back the money and still not interrupt or disrupt the planned schedule, but you can't wait until next year necessarily to let Sam and the superintendent and the Board of Ed know you're committed to get this project done in the summer of 2018.
So we would take the same tack we were doing with some of the CIPs, put them on the list, should we get the money, we'd be able to tell them right off that you'd be able to do it, or not do it.
I normally make my submissions to the state, the beginning submissions to the state in October, November of the previous year, so that during the summer, we can get it done.
So you have to be this fall, right?
Just to make sure that it gets in a timely fashion, but we could probably delay that a couple of months if we needed to.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this? Seeing that all those in favor of zero, please raise your hand. Opposed, abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. Brings us to Mary Morrison and the design of the parking lot. It was $20,000 approved unanimously.
I'd like to move to reconsider.
We have a motion to reconsider.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on reconsidering? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. Would someone like to move another number?
Zero.
We have a motion and a second for zero. Is there any discussion? Oh, Harry?
Yeah, I knew it was going to get to getting all -- that's why I moved to put it on the table, but I still would prefer to leave the $20,000 there. The town was kind of committed to doing this quite a while ago, and I think the project still should go forward. I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Any other discussion? Karen?
Can we make sure it gets on the list?
Yes.
If there's available one.
Yeah. Any discussion? I think, Mark, we're probably going to have to take a good look at the list eventually and prioritize what -- okay. All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of zero, please raise your hand. Opposed, abstentions? That passes six to two to zero. And that's -- is that it for -- I think that's it for CIPs, I believe. Correct? Okay. So there's also an opportunity to reconsider numbers. I think everybody understands the -- how it works in the council, and I would make it open for anybody to throw up any reconsiderations, should they desire to. Rich?
Yeah, I opened it up to reconsider the number that we put on the floor the other day.
Okay. You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Go ahead, Rich.
Well, I opened it up because I think we heard a lot of rhetoric the other day, and we read a lot in the paper, and I think that one of the individuals that's here from the RTM certainly mentioned that the amount of money that we put down on the table, based on what we would do if we cut it in half or so, in my case, would bring about $308 a year more, which is a very small percentage for destroying the portion of the school system that Dr. Grineer indicated. And I think the number that we should consider would be what he had basically indicated on his page, which was $2,724,328. And I put that on the floor.
What's the number?
We've got to vote for reconsideration first.
Yeah, that's right, we have to vote for reconsideration first. So, thank you. Is there any other -- don't worry about the number yet. Is there any further discussion about reconsidering? Greg?
Yeah, I mean, reconsidering budget numbers is a pretty normal process that we go through. I just hope tonight that there's a little bit more of a professional approach to reconsideration. I really didn't appreciate some of the antics and tone that went on Wednesday night.
Thank you. Bonnie?
I concur with that. I thought it was extremely unprofessional.
Okay. Diane?
I too agree. I've never been dealt with such disrespect in my life, and I'm pretty old. I am going to read one of the comments after the day article from Thursday morning. It's very quick. "I did not write it, but I could have. For people who pride themselves on having an anti-bullying policy in place in the schools, that was the most disgusting display of bullying and intimidation I've ever seen at a council meeting. On that basis alone, if I were a counselor, I would not change my vote. Stand your ground, council. I, as a taxpayer, fully support your decision. Parentheses, I also disclose that I have two children attending Pleasant Valley School." But I am going to take my emotion out of this. I am going to tell you that I am listening to giving back some to the Board of Ed, only because we're getting cautious optimism from Hartford. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Please note, I didn't say it before, and everyone's been very well -- everyone's been acting very professionally, but we are here to conduct a meeting here, and we're hoping that the crowd who is here is observing and not participating. So we appreciate that from everybody. As has been discussed, emotions got very high at the last meeting, and I understand the passion, and we're going to try to leave our emotions -- I know I am going to try to leave my emotions at the door, and we're going to move forward. We do have a reconsideration. It's been great.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
It's been seconded. If there's no more discussion, all those in favor of reconsidering the Board of Education number, please raise your hand. Opposed, abstentions? That passes --
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move a number.
Go ahead.
Which would be adding, if I got my numbers right, adding $2.6 million back to the number that was passed previously. That number is $75,135,758.
Second.
We have a motion from Harry, and a second from Dean. Greg?
I'd like to move another number. That restores $1,956,242.
Second.
We have a motion from Greg, and a second from Diane. Bonnie?
The -- that number is from Dr. Grineer's Level One and Level Two reductions. We've originally come up with a number slightly lower than that, but we decided to use his number.
Could you repeat that?
That was Level One and Level Two.
The floor is open. Is there any discussion on this? Dean, and then Bonnie. Dean?
No, I was pointing to Bonnie.
Oh, okay.
But I would like to be out.
So that number restores $1,956,242 to the Board of Ed. What we cut from the town budget, we were using the $5 million, was about $1.6 million. So it's almost sharing the split, but we're not at $5 million now. We're at $3,556,242. So if we get cut any more than that, the Board of Ed is going to have to absorb that cut. And that -- I also would like to see some of the -- if we don't get cut anywhere near that amount, if we don't get -- if we get cut less than $3.5 million, I'd like to see some of the Board of Ed, the money be restored to the town, because we cut tremendously out of public works, and a lot of the town departments, and to sacrifice to try to save this money for the schools. I split it with you.
Rich, another second?
Yeah, I'd like to move another number. $75,000 -- $75,2965. This was the number that Dr. Grineer put down on his Level One page, which would -- we would reduce it the amount of to $2,724,328. And I think that was the number that he felt comfortable with at the caucus that I had the other night.
Can you repeat that number, please?
$2,724,000.
Hold on, hold on. Seventy-five million.
Oh, $75,020,965.
It's on the front side of Dr. Grineer's sheet.
Got you.
And that, to me, is a compromise with what Dr. Grineer said he could live with. And I think, you know, given what was all said at the meeting, I think this is a good compromise.
We have a second?
I'll second it, because it's only $100,000 off of what I proposed.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Dr. Grineer?
Well, I just -- I can't really speak for the board, but I wanted to address something that Councilor Nault said with a little evidence. In December, the Board of Education budget, the education cost share and grant was reduced by $247,000. And I went to the board, and I said, "I think in collaboration with the town council, the board should actually cut $247,000 and deliver that to the town council." And much to my somewhat surprise, but delight, the board in fact agreed, and as you know, the board has set aside $247,000. So I can't really talk to the future, but I can say that when this town, when this municipality was hit with that kind of cut, the board stepped forward and gave back 100 percent of that $247,000 cut. So I would personally anticipate, and I will give you my promise, that I would encourage the board, if more draconian cuts come, that they would -- that the board would respond to that. I can only tell you, I am -- I was hopeful coming into this meeting, as I was the other night, and I am just thrilled with the level of cooperation, and I just -- I love what the day said today. "We are all on one team. We should compromise here, and we should get our act together," as Councilor Nault, and Mayor Flax, and I, and Mrs. Austin, a few of us went up to Hartford, and we fought like crazy to -- because, as some of you said the other night, the real problem is the unfair cut that we're receiving from Hartford. And as I said the other night, it breaks my heart that there's a level of divisiveness, and I just -- I want to tell you, the level of cooperation that I'm sensing right now is excellent. But I'll say one other thing about that middle number. The first number and the third number make me very happy. But the middle number would require us to do all the things that I said would be so hurtful to the elementary school, taking field trips, and instructional software away, to continue to identify the elimination of the middle school sports program, which, as I said, is really abhorrent to me. As a former athlete, as a superintendent, as a grandparent, I don't want to see that happen. I don't want to see two middle schools share a media specialist. That is really anti-education. And certainly, I have spoken to plenty of students at the high school. We have kids who are striving to take more difficult international baccalaureate courses, and to take advanced placement courses, and the thought that students would be dissuaded from those courses because they'd have to pick up -- families would have to pick up about $50,000. And then lastly, of course, to pay for play. We don't want to do that, and we have not proposed any dramatic cuts, but those Level Two cuts, as bad as Level Three cuts are, I would strongly encourage you to consider what Councilor Marasovich just explained, that Level One cuts would give us at least a stable platform to move forward with this budget.
Thank you. Dean?
I've said this before, I'll say it again a different way. I really resent being Hartford's hatchet man. And I, if it were up to me, I'd be alone. I pretty much give you what you asked for, and I'll tell you why. What you asked for in your budget, I'll tell you why. I invite anybody to take a look, anybody if you want to, take a look, go to the finance office, look through my old books, and check out the tax figures, the budget figures, the education budget figures over the years. And you can come to different conclusions. I'm not going to throw all the numbers out, but the average increase, say, in the last eight years, this is the average annual increase in the Board of Ed budget, is .8 percent. So some may think that that's exorbitant, some may not. Just to provide some perspective, that same period, the average town budget overall has gone up .4 percent. Now, the number that outstrips them all is the increase in the taxes over that same period. It's 1.9 percent. That's the kind of thing that we're looking at. There are years where we've seen dramatic increases. They have not been recently, with this year being the exception, and we know what's caused that. Last year, the budget went down 3 percent. I shouldn't say that. The budget, '16 to '17 went down 3 percent. The Board of Ed actually went down. There have been three years in a row where it was a level budget, so on and so forth. So just want to provide some perspective. In the event people are thinking, "Well, how do we put the monster back in the box? How do we cut the hydrus head off?" Or whatever metaphor you want to use. Take a look at the numbers and judge for yourself whether some of these increases, whether we go decade by decade, or year by year, whether they're actually as outrageous as some people would paint them. And I hate, really hate being in the position of being an apologist for a municipality, or for a government, and all of that. It is not my thing. But the numbers are what they are, and as I said, if it was up to me, I would give the whole thing, but it's a year of sacrifice. I do not like coming from this -- I start, when I start my numbers, I start from the numbers themselves, and I say, "Well, what percentage would I need from here, there, everywhere?" Without regard to the actual effect. That's a starting point. And I don't want to get into, you know, somebody's attitude, or whether somebody gave something, and good faith, and all of that. That's just a starting point. But at some point, ask yourself, "Okay, I propose this sort of an adjustment to a number, education, any other department. What would be the effect of that?" And frankly, we guess. We guess, and we believe, for example, that when we hit public works, a couple hundred thousand dollars, or whatever the numbers are, you pick the year, that they'll figure it out. And the worst that'll happen is something won't get plowed in the morning, a pothole won't be repaired, a catch basin won't be emptied out, or anything like that. Move up and down the chain of things that the town does, parks, planning, the town clerk's office, anything. Public safety's up there. We don't control fire, but we do control police. Public safety's up there, but at least even what public safety would have to be, the schools. So that's the case, and we're guessing, we really are guessing, about the effect of adding or subtracting from a proposed school budget. And guess what? There's an elected group of people, I'm not going to sing the praises of the Board of Ed, only because I've watched them in action for three cycles of a budget, of a teacher or contract negotiation, to see how they work, how they work behind closed doors. There's an elected body, I'm not going to say below us, between us, basically, between us and the actual education function, that was elected to determine what's appropriate for expenditure in schools. And we can guess that there's stuff in there that maybe if we were in charge of the zoo, we wouldn't put in there. But it's a guess, and what are we gambling with when we do that? That's my concern, and that's why I would have supported the original number. But I do find the number that Harry proposed a reasonable compromise, and it sounds to me like the Board of Ed, at least the superintendent, is willing to live with that number. But this is an emergency year, I grant that, some shared sacrifice, but always keep in mind what the effect is going to be. I just don't like going any further than this.
Thank you. So my feeling on this is that I understood that the number that was out there was not workable for me, but we are a council of nine, and theoretically, we are one -- we're one body. And I will support the number that was put up by Counselor Grimm. And the reason being is that we are in an unknown year, and we have laws that we have to abide by. So there's a minimum budget requirement from the state that says that we can't spend -- we can't decrease the budget more than we did this year. And so unless we get cut by the ECS budget gets cut. So this budget is X number of dollars below this year's number. I think it's 1.7 below this year's number, I think, give or take. So my hope is, is that the cut isn't as big, and by law, we'll have to put back money. And that was a concession that I made, because when we came into this, there were, as I think everybody knew, there were counselors who were at different ends of the spectrum with regards to where we were and what we wanted to cut. And, you know, we, the -- there were -- it was considered to be reconsidered, which I appreciate, and I want to make sure that it got reconsidered. And I'll, like I said, I'll fall back on, you know, if the state cuts ECS $1 million, then $700,000 has to be put back into the account, and that would restore a lot of what the number that Harry threw up there. I don't agree with a comparison of the -- I mean, I do look at the town and what's cut on the town, and what's cut on the Board of Ed, but with each thing, they're unique. So to -- I agree that the town has taken a lot of heat, and, you know, they continue to have a budget that is, I think it's, Mark, is it 2.9 percent lower this year than last? And last year was 5.1 percent lower than the year before. So as I said before, I look to Hartford, because they're making us as a community have to adjust our good standing and the way that we treat our taxpayers, and the way that we look at our money, and how we handle our money. And they're forcing us into doing things that we may not necessarily want to do. And, you know, if we -- in this current year, if we had went on the same, if we assumed the same revenues from the state, it would have meant a 1.9 percent mill increase, and after I think we were done with the budget, it would have come in at probably a mill, half, whatever, and would have been very reasonable. And we're put in a position that we are looking at the taxpayers and the people who are on fixed incomes in the state, and we're looking at students, of which I have four in the school system, and what they have to go through. And so I'm going to support that number in the hopes that the state doesn't cut us as much, that our legislators in Hartford work for us and are successful, and there's an ECS formula that is, that takes into consideration the uniqueness of Groton, and that the things that we're looking at in the Level Two are restored. So that's what I'd say. Dr. Grineer?
Well, first of all, I appreciate just the fact that the budget number has been reconsidered. But what I was thinking was, the council has taken out tonight at a CIP $255,000. And I would respectfully request that at least that amount be added to Counselor Grimm's number, which would help to offset the elimination of middle school sports and the tests at the high school. the high school. These are considerations that I, it's really going to be extremely difficult for me, and I'm to plan for this. And what, there are certain things, you're right, that can be restored. For example, the site budgets. We've cut about $100,000, $150,000 from the site budgets. If the cut from Hartford is restored, that's easy to put back. But there are planning elements here that would be difficult to put back. And I would just respectfully request that you at least consider putting back the $255,000 that you just removed from the budget, which would allow the board and me to manipulate those numbers a little bit, to try to lessen the impact. And then, of course, I appreciate the fact that if this number, which I think will, I hope, will be mitigated from Hartford, but at least if we had that, it would help us to manage some of these concerns that I know, as I said before, I know the high school students and middle-school students are extremely concerned about the loss of sports and the loss of the IB and AP tests that have been absorbed by the board. Some of the other cuts I think could be postponed. But as I say, I would respectfully request that you consider adding 255 to Councilor Grimm's number.
Bonnie?
I want that amount of money because it's part of the town's budget to be restored to Public Works if we were going to do any restoring. And I support the number that Councilor Grimm put on the floor. And I, by supporting that number, does not mean I endorse these things that you're cutting. It's not my job to run the school. It's the Board of Ed's job and yours, Dr. Grineer. I would not be cutting sports. There are other things I think that you could look at.
You know, I read an editorial, sports editorial today in the New England Day, where the writer castigated me for rolling out the same old, same old cuts of sports at the middle school and pay-for-play at the high school. Both of those things come to $100,000. And what I would respectfully request from Mr. Dumarow is, even if I save that $100,000, where do I get the 5.1 million more? There are no dramatic cuts here. And I accept the responsibility, as you say, to make these cuts. These are the cuts that I have identified to the board that I think were the least impactful. But saying that is somewhat ridiculous, because you can't cut $5.2 million from a school budget and not have a significant impact. So I would just offer that whatever can be mitigated, I would greatly appreciate. And because there's a practicality of this, the board needs to move on in very short period of time to make, to plan for these cuts. And if, as I say, if Hartford gives us the money, which I frankly don't think you're going to see much of anything until July, perhaps August, that will be too late for many of these programs to be restored.
I just want to reply to that. The number 5.2 has been used by the newspaper and by you, Dr. Grineer, because that was what you requested. There is almost a unanimous, we've been our caucus, there is nobody on this council, and I think Rich wasn't in caucus with us, but I think he would agree, we were not going to give you 5.2, because that included a 1.67 percent over your last year's budget. So the actual number that we cut was $3,685,000, and you wouldn't have gotten any more than that, even if there was no cut from the state.
Well, the fact remains that the board passed a budget that realized there were contractual increases, as Councilor Antipas said. We have a contractual obligation to meet those requirements. And so the board's budget, you know, had it been cut to zero, we would, of course, made that adjustment, and I certainly respect your comments. But from the board's perspective, once July 1 rolls around, God help us, we will have a budget, we will have a need for a budget, which is $77.7 million. The budget that was passed by the council was 72.5. So on July 1, I realize I will need 77.7, I will only have 72.5. So that means somehow, somewhere, we have to come up with $5.2 million.
I just want to reiterate again to make sure that people understand that if it was up to me, you know, I would not go for what I refer to as a nuclear option. You know, that we don't know what it's going to be. And I would put, I would, you know, look at more, and then adjust accordingly. But we are a council of one, and there has to be a majority to get things done. And to me, that was the best, that was the best I was going to get, and I'll support it for that reason. I think that the counselors who were, put up the original cut, made concessions as well. And I appreciate that. And so, you know, you're, there's a lot of people out there who are going to look at it and say, it's not, you know, you cut too much or whatever. And, you know, it was, it's better than the original number, as far as I'm concerned. And maybe not as good as it would be in your eyes. But it moved the needle, $1.9 million to the black or to the whatever, wherever it moved the needle, it moved the needle. So there are three numbers on the floor, just to tell you, and we can't put another number out there. So go ahead.
Well, I would just say, and I appreciate municipal leaders sitting up here, my problem is we're talking about children. And I understand that we have these financial issues. And I understand that we're going to hope that the, and I take everyone at their word that the money will be restored. But in the interim, it would be, I would respectfully suggest that it would be better for us, especially given the fact that the board didn't theoretically give you $247,000 back when unasked. The board actually gave you that money back. And I would respectfully request that just the level-one cuts be made, which would be the 200, the 2.7 million dollar cut. And as I say, I can't speak for the board, but I think I know the board. And if the money was not restored, especially as we move forward with the RTM, there would be an opportunity for the RTM to make further cuts. And if that was justified at the capital level, I would be the first one to support it. I was the one who said, give back the $247,000. So, you know, as I say, it's not a hypothetical move on the part of the Board of Ed, it's an actual move on the part. Yeah, and of course, last year, when this council was in trouble, perhaps Mr. Marasovich doesn't remember, because he wasn't here then, this board gave back $600,000 to the town, because we had it, and it was some money that was in our health insurance reserve. And I wish Councilor Perezotti was here, because she always threatens me about making sure I don't screw up the health insurance reserve. We gave, we, the board, gave back $600,000 last year. You know, and I think some of the tiers in the conversation I had with Councilor Grimm yesterday, or whatever it was, I talked about the level of cooperation that we have. I think we have magnificent cooperation. I think the record shows we have outstanding cooperation. And cutting level-one and level-two is extremely injurious to the children of this school district. And I will, I will not resort to the passionate language that I used the other night. But I will tell you in rational language, this is going to hurt children. I just don't want to see that happen. And I'm giving you my personal word, if we could get a compromise somewhat similar to what RTM member Nugent offered the other night, about half, I think we would have someplace to either go up from or down from. And this board, I believe, would support that.
Thank you. Mark, I do have a question. Can you talk a little bit to, whatever number that we do pass, and it goes through the RTM, and a mil rate is set, and we don't find out about whatever money we're getting from Hartford until after the mil rate is set? And we get, and they don't cut us as much. We can't take it back on the mil rate, right? Because we were already sending out the tax bills. So the mil rate is what it is. And we would just put that, we would put the money in the general fund? Because I think that's one of the things that we're trying to figure out, because if you're, if you put, if the mil rate is set, and the tax bills go out, and we get more money than we anticipated, we can't change, the tax rate is a tax rate.
You can't change a tax rate at that point. I mean, there are communities or instances when there have been refunds given. I would not recommend you do that, the costs associated with that. But you've also, as was mentioned earlier, you made reference to put it on the list. And I take that to mean, besides the three CIPs that we talked about a little while ago, there's probably six or seven other items that you have suggested put on the list that you would want to reconsider and possibly make a supplemental appropriation. Any dollars, any revenues that we get above and beyond what we're estimating, be them from the state or from library fines, goes to the general fund. And is it, will remain in the general fund unless the council and the RTM authorizes a supplemental appropriation? So likewise, if we didn't get as much money as Scenario Two is suggesting, my Scenario Two, not Dr. Grineer's scenario, then, you know, we're all going to be at battle stations to try to figure out, how can we make cuts after the budget's already been approved? So that, you know, we're not digging ourselves a deeper hole with respect to having to tap into the fund balance. So to answer your questions specifically, if we get more funding from the state or from somewhere than we're estimating, when you set the mil rate in around a month, those dollars would stay in the general fund, unless the council and then the RTM authorize some supplemental appropriations to deal with the items on the so-called list, or any other thing that may come up.
Okay. Diane?
Dr. Grineer, you asked for a compromise. And we sat down, and we did. We came with, I think, a reasonable compromise. We're giving you back $1,956,242. I'd like to move to vote, please.
We have a motion to vote. Is there a second?
It's on the third number.
Right, that's right. That's right.
To move the question, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Does that require a second, Dean?
I haven't commented.
Not a pro-terior, but I would say yes.
All second.
Yeah, all those in favor of moving the number? Raise your hand. Opposed? That passes eight to zero to zero. So the last number on the floor is $75,020,965. And all those in favor? Please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? That fails two to seven.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a third number.
Okay.
Last year's Board of Ed number, $76,468,239.
So it's $76 million?
$76,468,239. That eliminates the dreaded 1.67 percent increase that the Board of Ed dared to come to us with.
Second.
We have a motion by Dean and a second by Harry. All those in favor?
I have a question. What number are you using?
I'm using last year's Board of Ed number.
That's $76,227.58.
Is it? I pulled it out of a book, sorry. But I must have different books. It's like the versions of the Bible.
I can clarify.
You can tell me.
Yeah, you.
No, that's the $247,000.
I think the assumption was made that the board did not voluntarily offer the $247,000. So the budget actually is currently 76,464. But I would just reiterate, in response to your question, Mayor Flex, that this board, literally over the last 12 months, has, without the revenue process outside of that, has returned to the town $847,000. When the town was in need, is in need, I get it, the board has responded in that way. So to say that we're concerned about there might be some greater tax burdens from Hartford, I think the history of this board, I would offer $847,000 as evidence, that we don't, it is not like many municipalities that I know, that the education people say, we've got ours, and, you know, the town can basically go pound sand. That has never been my experience in Groton. When I came here, there was a $1.4 million hole in the health insurance reserve that the council helped fill, and I greatly appreciated that. Since that time, the board has been great stewards of that fund, and it is, it remains healthy. It was so healthy last year, that's what generated the $600,000. So the notion, the notion that somehow the town would have this significant shortfall, and the board would say, you know, that's your business, that has not been the experience here. It would not be the experience under my leadership.
Craig?
I certainly appreciate those comments. And I think in the same fashion, you know, the whole town council, you know, was supporting the 2020 plan, because we believe in strong schools.
Right.
You know, I appreciate you giving back, and I hope, you know, you appreciate the council's support of the 2020 plan.
Absolutely. It's a two-way street. It's a two-way street. We have enjoyed excellent cooperation.
Jay, do you want to say something?
We have a motion on the floor. Can we? We have a motion on the floor. Can you just ask?
Which motion are you talking about?
About the level.
We voted. We voted on a number.
We got a third number.
So we.
Go ahead, Jay.
I just want to make a quick observation. You folks have a tremendous responsibility to balance the needs of the taxpayers with education. And I think it takes a great deal of courage for you to reconsider, given that you had the courage of your convictions at the first vote. I thank you that you came again the other night, and now you've come again a third time, and you've agreed to reconsider. And I just think that we need to just appreciate that. You could have just stood your ground. But I appreciate this attempt to reach a compromise. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, I have a question, Dr. Grineer. With respect to the level-one and the level-two, and the level-two is the, it was the field trips, assessments, coordinator travel, instructional software, eliminate sports in the middle schools, the site budget, media specialist, safe futures, and then in the high school, no IB, no AP, 15 percent reduction, reduction in cost for sports, pay-to-play. And you were saying that, is it the instructional software, which is 103? I'm torn about pay-to-play, because I know you came from Ledgerd, and my wife, you know, I know Ledgerd, and a lot of the communities around here do have pay-to-play, and we're probably one of the only ones that do not. And the same thing with the AB. And the same thing with the AB, the IB and the AP tests. You know, many of the communities in this, in southeastern Connecticut, don't, the schools don't pay for those tests. But I'm trying to figure out, you know, again, I don't want to, I don't want to hurt the students. I don't even like saying that, because it conjures up such a, you know, it's so, it's so subjective.
Sure.
That you, you know, what I think is hurting the students and what you think is hurting the students can be two different things. But I'm trying to figure out, you know, if you looked at the instructional software, which is 103,917, the media specialist in the middle school, which is 61,904, are those the two biggest things in the, in the Level Two? That are, would you, in your opinion?
So problematic.
That are, that are the most problematic?
Well, frankly, I, I think the sports, you know, we, the, the sports is one thing, obviously, while students can play recreational sports, it's true, the level of competition for interscholastic sports is, is, is greater. And we want to prepare our, our students for, for high school competition and so forth. And the AP, the AP and IB tests, you know, we, we pride ourselves on really putting a program that has a great deal of equity. So the, the students who are taking these exams really come from a diverse background. So it, it would, it would greatly trouble me if, if I thought students were either not taking an AP course, because they, frankly, they didn't think they could afford to take the test, or if students felt that they weren't able to come up with the, the money to participate in sports. But the two that you, you identified, yeah, those are, I mean, they're all painful.
No, I, I understand. And I'm, I'm also looking at the, understanding that, I mean, I'm torn about the money that was given back too, because as somebody had pointed, I don't know if it was Diane or Bonnie, but I understand that when money is given back, it, it's, it's a, I mean, we couldn't be happier with how the relationship has been, I think, over the last few years. But then I look at the town and what the town gives back on the budget that they have. So they're looking at a, I don't know the exact number, but $26 million, and they've gone down seven, over 7% in the last two years. And, and, and they're, and we're only, that's only 28% of the budget. You know, the schools are 72% of the budget, and, and, and they haven't gone down as, as much. So I'm, I'm looking at, at the comparison of the two, and we're, and so, you know, I think last year, when the town, when we were tightening the belt, the town returned, I think, over $600,000. We're, we're, is that right, Mark? It was like $600,000 of?
At year-end.
At year-end, of unspent money.
Yeah. And I would, I would just point out.
$2.2 million.
Yeah, okay.
I would, I, I would point out, the board didn't do it at the end of the year, but board did it in the middle of the year.
No, 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 and I'm not.
Because when I spoke to Mr. Offinger, he informed me that the town was in trouble, and I went to the board, and voluntarily, mid-year, came up with $600,000.
Yeah. So I'd like to put another number on the floor.
You can't.
We can, we only have, oh, I see, you're right. Okay. You're right, you're right. Okay. I'm sorry. Dean?
Clarify, because it was a question before about, you know, where the number came from. And I don't have a third source, but I'm looking in both our budget book and also the Board of Ed's booklet. And in both cases, references made to fiscal year '17 budget of $76,468,239, which is the number that I moved. Where does the, where does the other number come from?
It's the adjusted, it's the adjusted budget. Because the $247,000.
It's an adjusted.
Yeah, but under the, under the adjusted figure, I still see that.
Well, we have, we do have a third number on the floor.
Hold on a minute, that's my number.
Okay.
Cindy?
The difference between the two numbers, is $76,468,239 was the adopted budget for '17, and the other number is the estimate of where we take into account the $240,000 that is returned. We reduce the estimate by the funds that will be returned at year-end.
Gotcha.
They don't actually get returned during the year. They'll be closed out at year-end to fund balance.
Okay. Yeah, Bonnie?
So Cindy, so if there was no cut from the state, what would the next year, what would the MBR be? The, the adjusted number or the original number?
No, I don't have, I don't, the, the MBR is not just a set number, it's a formula calculated by the state. I would not have that number. I have tried to get that number, and it's, it's almost impossible to get that, any information from the state on that at this point.
I, I could answer that if you want.
Go ahead.
The number would be the, the adopted budget, and then there, as, as Ms. Landry said, there would be adjustments from that number. But the, with the huge cuts that were proposed by the governor, the, the MBR can be reduced by that number. So technically, the MBR would be $9.2 million less than now.
I know, but I just was wondering where the starting part is.
The starting number was, that number was never adjusted, because the board voluntarily gave it back.
So I'd like to recognize Joe Dela Cruz. You want to do?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this on? Yeah. Well, thank you, Ms., thank, thank you everybody for being here. I think the, the position that, that Hartford has put us in is disgusting and disgraceful. I want to clear the, the air a little. Again, you read the newspaper, and I think a lot of, there's a lot of stuff that isn't true in there. But with, with me personally, it sounds like they were asking Christine Conley and myself to be beating the drum a little louder and yelling and screaming. Everyone knows the day that, that he announced the budget, we had a, a conference a week later, and basically, for a freshman Democrat to be calling the Democratic governor's budget dead on arrival, is not a good thing to do, I guess. But that's what I felt it was that day, is how I feel today still, and I said it. But Chris and I stand strong. I think up in Hartford, just to let you guys know, we are united with Heather, Senator Summers, Chris and I, we are working hard. But again, you, you don't get too far, and we, so we noticed that, you know, when we're fighting, it's harder to, to make things happen. So we're working and explaining what Groton really is, because unfortunately, they didn't know how our town operated, or what we are, or how special we are. Because we are different than every other community, and the more we explain it to them, the better they, they realize. So I'm, I'm really more optimistic than I was. I was really upset the day that they announced it. The reporter had asked us for interviews, I couldn't, I couldn't do it, because I still don't have self-control at all times, so I knew better to get in front of a microphone. And I just drove home and screamed on the way home, but, but made a, made a, a plan, and we're, we're implementing a plan up there, to let everyone know out at home that, that things aren't going to be hopefully as bad. I mean, we're, we're just feeling better and better about it every day. And I, I love seeing that, that you guys are coming together, because I get sick to my stomach thinking, my kids are graduated or, or went through the schools, but for me to be entering a kid that was going to the junior high and not have sports available to them would be, would be, I, especially being a coach and, and my whole career helping kids through those programs, that would be upsetting to me, and maybe even make, make different choices where I attend school. So I, I hope we really can work out together, and it looks like we are. So thank you for recognizing me, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Grineer, for, for coming out and fighting.
The last number on the table is $76,468,239. All those in favor, please raise your.
Wait, was there a second?
There was.
I'll come.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Extentions? That fails two to seven. I'd like to move another number. It's $74,739,000, which is to put in the $247,000 back that you gave us originally. And.
Could you say that number again? Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this? Harry?
Yeah, I'll just say, just simply, I can't support it. I think it's pretty apparent on what I would support, and, and be honest with you, it just isn't enough, so.
Okay. Thank you. Is Greg? Oh, Dean?
Yeah, I should have pointed out before, not sure that would have made any difference, but last year's figure, the one that I moved, the one that is unadjusted or whatever, but the one that's in print, was actually a couple of clicks, is .3, a little over .3% lower than the prior year's budget, which of course was 2% higher than the prior year's budget. But you don't break 2% till you go back into 2009. The number we're talking about now, the number that's on the floor, I mean, it takes you back years into the Board of Ed budget. And, you know, I'd like a, I'd like a Virginia class up for $100 million, but I'm not going to get it. It, it costs what it costs. That's, that's where I am with this, so I'm not going to support it either.
Greg?
I think I can support that number, because I think it gets pretty close to what Mr., Dr. Grineer wanted, at 255.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Could I just say one thing? I've never, you know, I've never been involved in sports, because there weren't any for women when I was in school. But we are the only base in Connecticut, and almost 25% of our students are military dependents. And those kids may not have enough money to do sports. That's all.
Thank you. Any other discussion? And again, I'll say that I'm, I, I understand the council's stance, and just trying to inch a little bit closer, so.
I appreciate that.
That's my, that's my reasoning. So, is there any other discussion? All those in favor of $74,739,000, please raise your hand. Opposed? That fails three to five. Greg?
I'll move another number. $74,747,000, which adds in $255,000.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second for $74,747,000. I know how people understand how this goes, so if this doesn't pass, then it goes to the next number, which is 74,492. The number on the floor is 74, 747. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing that, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? That fails three to five. Anybody else? The number, the last number on the floor is $74,492,000. And that's the number on the floor. And I will say that we did talk to Deb Perizzati before the meeting, and she said that she would support that number, just so people know that she was spoken to before we did meet. So, all those in favor of $74,492,000, please raise your hand. Opposed? Extentions? That passes five to three. Yes.
Well, thank you for.
Dean?
Sorry. For the record, my daughter's in a class of 25. Not 10, not 11.
Okay.
I move we adjourn.
We are adjourned? We just took a little break. And we are back. And we are going to move on to whatever anybody wants to move on to. Anybody have anything? Cindy?
I believe we have a motion to reconsider two accounts, based on the changes to the CIP.
Yes. So we're reconsider, which, which two accounts are we reconsidering, Bonnie?
107.5.
I would like to make a motion to reconsider two accounts, because of our adjustments to the CIP projects.
Okay.
Who are they?
The first account would be account, 107.5.
You got a page?
I'm sorry, 230.
Thank you. Okay, the number, so we have a motion to re.
I was going to make a motion to reconsider the, the school budget before we did that.
Okay. I'll second that. We have a motion to reconsider the school budget and a second. We have a vote in there, is there any discussion before we vote on that? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? That passes four to three to reconsider. Okay. Harry?
Now that we voted for it, can I, can I ask why?
To consider putting back in the, the $255,000.
So would you like to move a number, Bonnie?
I object to this, because we already had that number on the floor and already voted it down.
You can't do that.
Say again, Harry?
Counselor Knoll is absolutely right, you can't, it would have to be different by a dollar or something to be a valid number to put on the floor. You can't, you can't put the same number on the floor that was defeated.
Okay.
Wow, for a newbie, I'm getting, I'm getting the hang of this stuff.
Pretty good. All right. Greg, is there a number that you wanted to put on the floor?
I could put $74,746,000.
We have a motion by Greg?
Second.
We have a second by Rich. Is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, I still don't think that is. I think it's abhorrent.
I'm sorry, say again?
I think it's abhorrent, that's all. I've said it.
I, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
The word is, the word is abhorrent, but I've said it already, so.
Okay.
I don't understand it.
Abhorrent?
Yeah.
And the core of that is, you should go to school. No, kidding. It's, it's the same root as the, as in the word horror.
Ugly.
Abhorrent.
So is it fair?
Frightening, hateful, whatever.
Is it fair to say, Counselor Antipas, that your support of numbers is, is it wholly on principle? So that you're, if the number is a higher number than what was there, but not the set, whatever number it is that you want, that?
Well, the, the principle, the principle is, the principle is, what is needed to fund schools that are actually attractive? Because I think that the worse your schools, the more expensive they're going to be in the long run. I think you need to keep the schools attractive.
Bonnie?
I find this unfair. It's fair, but Diane Barber Marley had to leave. She thought that we were done with the school vote. I'm sure she would have stayed if we thought that we were bringing this up to vote again.
So noted. I think that the number, Counselor Knoll, would still have to be, oh, I guess it would be, well, we have, Counselor Perizzati's not here either. We're not sure how she would look at this. Yes, sir?
Actually, Counselor. I guess in light of that, in, in rethinking this, you know, I, you know, I, I think I, I would retract my motion. Not that I'm, you know, I am for that number, but I think in light of the folks that left, it'd be unfair to.
Okay.
I was actually going to say the same thing. And I was going to say, I would respectfully request that perhaps this could come up Tuesday night, when the full, full council is here, if, if there's a meeting, before the budget gets settled.
Dr. Grineer, we are in a, a budget committee of the whole, that recesses to a time definite, and we're at the point of that, where we've actually extended it once. Now, we could extend this meeting and not recess tonight, and go to a time definite, if need be. I do understand, though, from, my ears are open all the time, the Council, Barbara's not here next week. So I know it doesn't solve that problem, and I don't know about Counselor Perizzati, but I think we're at the end of our budget.
I know Counselor Barber won't be, she's been away Saturday, I believe. So that's one of the reasons we had the meeting tonight, was to, was to make sure, although Counselor Perizzati wasn't here.
Deb's away too, I think, isn't she?
Not next week, I think she, she's just gone the weekend, yeah. So, so Mark, by, by charter, we are married to the 28th, is that the?
Correct. The council has to adopt your budget by the 28th.
And the 28th is Thursday?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Well, we've had a retraction of the rescind, right? And who seconded it? Rich, you retract your second?
We'll pull it back.
Okay. So that leaves us with no reconsideration. Thank you.
If I'm, if I'm.
Yeah. Go ahead, Dean.
But what it's worth, we, we often go and withdraw motions and withdraw seconds. I'm not a parliamentarian. I think, though, technically speaking, once a motion's been made in second, that it belongs to the body and may not be withdrawn by the mover and by the secondary, it must be, you must vote to have the thing withdrawn. It's a technicality, it sounds like you. It's a technicality, it sounds like you all would do that anyway, but.
Okay, Harry?
I just would say, as a, it's implied if nobody really says anything, if somebody was a step up, you're right, but if somebody was a step up, you can't do that, that's against parliamentary rules, but I don't see that happening here.
Yeah, I mean, it's a point of order that normally we don't deal with, because we all know what we're talking about, I'm just saying, in a situation like this, maybe. But I agree with you, it sounds like nobody's game for this.
Why can't they make a motion to withdraw it?
You did, right, I thought you didn't.
We're done.
We're done. We are done, and we're going to move on, and-
Well, thank you. I mean that sincerely, and we would certainly want Counselor Barber here if there's any reconsideration. Well, that's ridiculous.
Okay, so we have a motion by Bonnie to reconsider two numbers, the first of which is capital reserve contributions. Cindy, do you have a new number?
I have a new number, it's $548,000.
230.
500, what is it?
548,000.
I'm going to move 548,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for $548,000. Any discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes seven to zero to one. Okay, what's the next number, Cindy?
It's on page 234. Capital reserve projects.
Okay.
The new number, $2,917,000.
I'd like to move $2,917,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for $2,917,000. Any discussion here? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? That passes seven to zero to one. And Cindy, do you know what, where we're at townwide, including Board of Ed, for increase or decrease of-
The overall total after tonight?
Yeah.
Yes, she's a wizard.
I had done it for the Board of Ed, but I had not done it for the changes to the capital reserve fund, it would just take me a couple of minutes to figure that out.
Okay. You certainly don't have to wait around, boy. Is there anything, anything else?
One's going twice, you want to renew your motion? Do we want to go back through the exercise, or no? I'm sorry, I'm speaking out of order.
Well, we have everybody here, right?
It's up to Deb.
It's up to Deb. Do we know how she feels?
I don't. Certainly could text her and ask her, but, you know, I think that her vote is not binding, but it's, I think, out of respect, as we would, as we did with Diane, that certainly can ask her. Cindy?
What you're asking me?
Yeah, so, okay.
Overall, the entire budget?
That sounds right, we gave back almost $2 million and-
Yes, you were at 8.06, and you restored the 1.9, and then the 225 that we just reduced from the capital reserve fund.
So, we have to voicemail, so we won't know how Deb feels.
Yeah, so in that respect, I believe it'll-
Well, we didn't have, well, okay, all right.
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? That does not pass.
Four to four.
Somebody taking notes on all this?
Cindy, who was on the prevailing side for the Board of Education vote?
The final number tonight?
Yeah, it was five to three, right?
Yep.
No, it was five to three.
It can't be six to three, Deb isn't here.
Mayor Flax did not vote for it.
I voted against it.
He did.
Right, so it's five to three.
And Harry didn't vote for it?
Indeed.
So, Rich, Bonnie, Greg, Karen, and Diane. Does any of those five want to make a motion to reconsider?
Make a motion to reconsider?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second to reconsider. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed? That passes four to three.
But no, he didn't have a second.
Five to three.
Oh, you did, I didn't hear any, sorry.
Is it five to three?
It was five to-
Five to three, I'm sorry.
Sort of watch it.
Greg, did you want to put another number up?
I lost my page. What page are we on?
We're on the school.
I know, the page is-
Cindy, can I ask you a question? I mean, the number that was actually passed was 74,492, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And I think I heard in discussion, I jotted a note down here, that Dr. Grinear was pleading with us to add $255,000 to that number. I really, everybody knows where I stand on the Board of Education budget, and if this doesn't happen, a number I really don't like is going to end up happening. So, I'm going to move whatever the sum of, it's 255, is that correct? The sum of 74,492 and 255, and I'm too tired, I don't have a calculator-
74,747.
Is that a number that's already been out?
Yes.
Yes.
Then I would add $1 to that.
So, are you putting up $74,747,001?
That's right.
Forty-six.
Yeah, he put forty, he did. So, we have a motion for $74,747,001. I will second it.
$74,747.
I don't, I asked them to add it up.
74,747,001.
That was the one that was up before, I think.
With $1?
Oh, and $1.
So, we have a motion and a second, discussion? No discussion at all?
Well, I mean, I put basically that number up before in light of, you know, returning the 247 and Dr. Grinear's request, so I think that's where the number came from.
I, yeah, I may have been a little off.
And a lot of this discussion stopped, Diane, because you weren't here, and now you are here, so that's why we're, I feel as if you're here, you can voice your opinion, and you don't have to see it on TV or read it in the paper tomorrow, so you're here.
Any other discussion? The number on the floor is, before I do this, I have one question. Since it's been, since we're reconsidering, if this number fails, do we go back to the old number, do we have to go, agree to a new number because it was rescinded?
The old number stands.
Okay, thank you. So, we have $74,747,001 on the floor. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? That passes five to three. Yeah. Do you need to do new numbers now, Cindy?
I'll give you the dollar if you want to make things right.
No, it's $255,000. No, it doesn't change the capital number, you're just adding back to the Board of Ed.
Okay. Dean?
No, that was it.
Okay. Bonnie?
Make a motion to adjourn.
We can't.
Second. No, she doesn't have to redo it.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Abstentions? That passes eight to three.